It is seven thirty four P M on Tuesday, November twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five. Good evening. My name is Christian Klein. I am the Chair of the Arlington zoning Board of Appeals and I am calling this meeting of the Board to order. First, I'd like to confirm that all members and anticipated officials are present from the zoning Board of Appeals. We have Patrick Hanlon.
Here.
Oh, we have Enkid Holly.
Here.
Uh, with Adam Will Blank.
Here.
We have our associate Brad Baranowski.
Here.
And we have our second associate, Nick Rosenberg.
Here.
Good to have you all with us. Roger Dupont is unable to join us this evening, so he will not take part in tonight's deliberations. Normally, I would now introduce Colleen Ralston, our clerk and zoning assistant, but she's on vacation this week, so I will be serving as host for the meeting. Then for our dockets this evening appearing for docket three eight seven two fifteen Foster Street, Unit One, we have Andrew Burns.
Hey, how are you? Good evening.
Good to have you with us. For docket three eight seven six nineteen Farrington Road, we have Raoul Zertz Sheen, who's the.
Right here, sir. Thank you. Good evening.
Good to have you with us. And for docket three eight seven seven twenty Nicod Street with Cynthia Bowles and Ed McDonald.
Here.
Great. Good to have you with us. The tonight's meeting of the Arlington zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely consistent with the bill signed by Governor Healy on March twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five, which extended temporary provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty seven. The extension of these provisions allows public bodies to hold their meetings remotely by providing live adequate alternative means of public access to the deliberations. This meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast by ACMI. Members of the public who are participating via Zoom and who wish to offer public comment should be aware that they will be asked to provide their full name and address, so a complete public record of the meeting can be taken in accordance with state law. All participants of this meeting are advised that people may be listening to the meeting without offering public comment, and those people are not required to identify themselves. Any votes that are taken this evening will be conducted by roll call vote. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. As Chair, I reserve the right to take items out of order in the interest of promoting an orderly meeting. As the Board will be taking up new business at this meeting, as Chair, I make the following land acknowledgement. Whereas the zoning Board of Appeals for the Town of Arlington, Massachusetts discusses and arbitrates the use of land in Arlington, formerly known as manatee, an Algonquin word meaning swift waters, the Board hereby acknowledges that the Town of Arlington is located on the ancestral lands of the Massachusetts tribe, the tribe of indigenous peoples, from whom the colony, province, and Commonwealth have taken their names. We pay our respects to the ancestral bloodline of the Massachusetts tribe and their descendants to Stone Habit Historic Massachusetts Territories today. Uh, so the first time I'd like to do this evening is an introduction. So Nick Rosenberg was appointed by the Select Board to serve as an associate member of the zoning Board of Appeals, and this is his first meeting with the Board, so I wanted to issue some words of welcome and ask Nick if he wouldn't mind just saying a couple of words introducing himself to the Board.
Yeah, it's great to be here. Great to meet everyone. Um, it's a privilege to be on the Board. I've been in Arlington for about fifteen years with my family. Um, we have two kids, one in the Dallinger District and one a freshman at Arlington High School. Um, by day, I'm an attorney. I have a boutique law firm in Boston. I'm a civil litigator, but I do a lot of real estate related litigation. Um, and I'm looking forward to serve. I've been wanting to serve the town for a while, and it's a great opportunity, so I'm looking forward to it. So it's nice to meet everyone.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much for stepping forward. It's great to have you with us. So moving on to tonight's administrative items. So just note that these items relate to the operation of the Board and as such are generally conducted without input from the general public. The Board will not take up any new business on prior hearings, nor will there be the introduction of any new information on matters previously brought before the Board. Um, we do not have minutes to approve this evening, so the one item we have is the vote on the decision. In docket three eight seven four, Tenmead Road, uh, this was a decision that was drafted by Patrick Hanlon, distributed to the Board for questions and comments, and a final revised draft was issued this afternoon for final review. Are there any questions or comments in regards to that final draft revised edition of the decision in Tenmead Road? Seeing none, I will move that the zoning Board of Appeals for the Town of Arlington approve and adopt the written decision in docket three eight seven four, Tenmead Road, which grants a special permit for a large addition under section five four two B six, and a front porch under section three nine two, excuse me. Lost track of which section that was. Five three nine B, five three nine D, excuse me, of the zoning bylaws.
Second, Mr. Chairman, on the assumption it's the revised version that we're talking about.
It is indeed. Uh, so then a roll call vote of the Board in favor of approval. Mr. Dupont is not with us this evening, so we have Mr. Hanlon.
I, excuse me, yes.
Mr. Holly.
Yes, sorry.
Uh, Mr. Will Blank?
Yes.
Mr. Baranowski?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. That is a unanimous decision, so that is approved. Uh, that is the last of our administrative items, so that brings us to the public hearings portion of our meeting. Before opening tonight's meeting for public hearings, here's some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of tonight's business. After I announce each agenda item, I will ask the applicant to introduce themselves for themselves and to make their presentation to the Board. I will then request that members of the Board ask what questions they have on the proposal, and after the Board's questions have been answered, I will open the meeting for public comment. At the conclusion of public comment, the Board will deliberate and vote to either continue or close the public hearing. All votes will be conducted by roll call vote. The final vote on any matter before the Board will be taken at a subsequent meeting once the written decision has been drafted and provided to the Board. After the decision has been adopted and signed, the decision will be filed with the Town Clerk, starting the twenty day appeal period under state law. After that time, the applicant may proceed with their building permit. However, under state law, no decision granted by this Board shall take effect until a certified copy of the final decision has been filed with and recorded at the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds in Cambridge by the applicant. So with that, the first of our public hearings this evening is item three on our agenda. It's docket three eight seven two fifteen Foster Street, Unit One. It's a continuation from a prior session, and with that, I will ask Mr. Burns to introduce himself, reintroduce himself to the Board and tell us what changes have been made.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the Board for hearing me again this week. Um, as a follow up, we have a two-family at fifteen Foster Street, and in the front unit, we are looking to close, uh, permission to close the front porch to gain some living space, and it's within the setback. The footprint is pre-existing, non-conforming, and we are not increasing that in any way. We're just kind of gaining some living area inside the house to make it more habitable. So since our last meeting, I think we all, um, we went over the floor plans and the Board asked that I kind of go revise and make some, you know, some tweaks to the plan to show what I intend to do to make it look more like a porch, um, using the obfuscations in some paneling and some molding details. So we haven't done it yet, but I would want to share my screen if that's okay.
Uh, one second.
I think I have the permission.
I can't remember. Uh, let's see here. Yes, you do.
There it is. Um, so bear with me. My architect goes on the Portuguese and he goes on these crazy long trips home, and he's just completely unresponsive. So as much as I tried to bug him to get this done, you're gonna have to, uh, just bear with my, uh, my, my artistic interpretation of what I'm looking to do. Um, so as we discussed in the last meeting, the big problem, I think, was the, the massing of this whole thing getting closed in. And so I think we collectively decided, okay, I think we should try to make this look more like a porch and similar to neighbors um, with by adding a detail. So and then I can show this better, but right here, I'm kind of drawing in an eight inch soffit that projects out further into the front yard to give a detail like this was closed on top of another roof. And to illustrate that, um, sorry, I lost you there. Um, I have some more pictures here. I'm not sure. Can, does this change in tabs? So similar to this, where, can you see this? Everyone see this? Okay, great. So this is actually on Harvard Ave and West Medford, but very close, very similar to what I'm intending to do, where you have this bump out right here, it sticks out where this closes down onto it. We're gonna have this pitched roof showing shingles to give the detail, uh, I think what we're looking for to, you know, really emphasize that these, this was a porch. It was a porch that was closed in, and it's in character with the rest of the neighborhood. Um, and then another one, this is directly across the street. This is showing like a copper flashing detail. Um, I don't know if we'll go that just because the way it is, um, we're looking more of a asphalt shingle, but the same idea of it being bumped out. Now, so I tried to show this, and then in addition to that soffit that we're gonna be putting on it, we discussed infilling the bottom, kind of running a paneling assembly in here, like right in line with the windowsill where we'll draw some boxes or some like do, do some rails looking things to kind of give the illusion of a porch similar to up here what we're showing. And then I got this, so on the, and then on the right side elevation, and as we discussed, we wanted more windows up there, but considering it's a closet, we're kind of limited to the one side of the room, so we chose the broad side because there's more space on this side of the house than it is on the left elevation, so I think this will get more eyes and more views. So we kind of used this wall as putting in the window, so we put one there, and then similarly, we'll carry that rail, that paneling detail around acting like rails. And then on this side, it'll just have the paneling detail, um, kind of following suit, and then the siding tying back in with the rest of the house. And that's kind of what I was thinking. I think that's very much in line with what we discussed unless I was sort of mistaken. But I can go through this or show you the, am I sharing? I'm sharing my screen, yes. So if you look at any particular page, please let me know. Um, or any kind of detail of my photos here to kind of show what I'm looking for.
Okay. So in what you've drafted, have you considered doing the that same sort of board and batten detail at the first floor level as well?
Well, so it, it actually has a board and batten detail as it stands. The siding, we were using various types of siding here, including clapboard, um, shingle style and board and batten. And I wish I had, I think I have, hold on, I have a picture of kind of what it looks like here. That's, this is the original. I think I have a rendering here somewhere. I might have to dig it up. But all that being said, this has board and batten just by design. When we like designed the house, this is all like this whole thing is board and batten. And I know it's not like the rail you're talking about, um, but it does.
Right now, it looks like clabberd, so we're trying to.
Yeah, no, I know. If you can, I'm just gonna, I don't want to go digging through your mic. I don't, I don't. Let's see. Fifteen Foster. Hold on, I gotta get rid of my pencil here and open something. Weaver Tampa, these things photos, fifteen Foster, rendering. So this is what it kind of looks like now or like as designed, um, which I think is a little more depth than what we're looking for in that two dimensional drawing. So, but then this gets all gets built out to kind of look like the detail is showing you across the street and on Harvard Ave, and then we're adding this window, and then this, this panel will come right across showing, you know, kind of giving that, that look. But I'm not, you know, I'm not that too opposed to making it down here. I just don't know if it needs it, um, because this is actually in reality brick right here. So this has kind of its own thing going on right here.
So are you.
So it does get broken. Um.
So are you enclosing the brick that's on the front of the house now?
I don't plan to. I mean, I was gonna paint it, like I was gonna like sponge paint it white, um, but I planned to leave it exposed brick all right here.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say, because, because we have to go by the plans that you've submitted. So in the plans you've submitted, that, that brick would be exposed at that first floor level, and what we're seeing for the enclosure, the front porch, is all just the, the horizontal clabberds. Um, but now that we have your revised elevations and you're showing, you know, effectively clabberds with the paneling just at that upper level. So trying to get a good handle on what exactly it is that you're proposing, because what you're showing this out in this rendering is very different from what is on the drawings.
Right. Um, okay. I mean, all right, so you want me to go back and label all this as brick and then, then come back?
Well, I mean, on the, uh, so it looks here like down below.
I mean, I think we're kind of getting into like design things, right? Isn't this just more?
Well, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure I understand what it is we're gonna, we're approving, so that, you know, when we go back, we, we know that what we're seeing in the field is what we know we approved. So we're just trying to get clarity on what what it is that you're intending.
Um, all right, well, I mean, I, I, you know, I don't think we, I didn't realize you're looking for that in depth, but you, so I guess we're showing brick here, which is exposed on this one, so that's staying. I mean, I can screenshot this one in particular for you, so that we can show this brick staying here.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, no, then, then just adding the soffit, which is shown, you know, on the rendering, it's just, doesn't have the depth to the which extent that we want to show it at, but this is a big bump, making this look like an infilled porch.
Okay. And then above, above that section, would you be doing horizontal clabberd, or would you be doing that vertical siding that you were showing in the other?
Um, we'll probably pick up that vertical, just so it looks cohesive with the, the rest of the, this.
And then below would be as is shown here.
Correct. Well, this rendering, you know, it's, this is, this is some of those trying to get through fiber. This is not showing the brick that's existing, but.
Right.
But that, that, this is really not what's in question at all. It's, it's just this area.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. No, I just want to make sure I fully understand what it is you're proposing.
Yeah, so this is an eight inch bump out soffit. I'm putting one window here, and then along this rail, under it, we're gonna put panels.
Okay.
Here.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
So I have a question. As we know, under the conditions, the applicant is going to be held to, um, complying with the pimp plans that are before us, and that doesn't include renderings and the things that we're just looking at. And I'm a little bit, I, I'm less concerned about walking by Foster Street and recognizing this is the thing I saw tonight, uh, which is good, and I'd like to do that, but I'm a little bit concerned with there being ambiguities when it comes to time for Mr. Champa to approve this, as to what exactly it is that we did that he's trying to match up with the applicant wishes to do at that stage. And I just, my question is, how do we? What is the best way to, assuming that, assuming that in, in general, we're in favor of the kind of thing we've just been shown? How is it that we somehow make it official, so to speak, so that Mr. Champa can, um, can apply it when he hasn't been here? And, uh, and, and makes it, makes it work. And I, and I do want to stress that that for us, this isn't just a design issue, actually. It's a design solution to a statutory issue, and the statutory issue is that um, the language in the bylaw that relates to enclosing porches has created this difficulty that people have been just, you know, extending the houses out into the, into the setback. And we're trying to, to find a way of using design as a tool to do that. We've been trying to find a way to, uh, uh, at least preserve some of the intent of the bylaw of having enclosed porches still sort of look like porches. So everything that we're doing here is designed to that end and not just to, to pleasing the aesthetic judgment such as it is of the Board. Um, so, I mean, this is a little different from the time when we really get excited about replanning and redesigning things, uh, because we like, we have ideas on making them look more attractive. This is sort of figuring out what's good enough in order to, in order to preserve the policy we have in lots of cases now to, um, as Mr. Burns elegantly put it, preserve the illusion of a porch. And so it's important for us to make sure that what Mr. Champa is looking at is the right thing, and it may be important for Mr. Burns for that, that there's no confusion there either. Um, and so I guess my question to the Chair is, what's the best way to bring that about and make sure that what happens going forward doesn't have any more bumps in the road? Uh, either to Mr. The prejudice of us or the, or Mr. Burns.
Certainly. So I think we can take the drawings that were, the most recent drawings that were submitted that came in today, and we can reference those elevations, um, and note specific changes to them. So we could, um, Mr. Burns, if you wouldn't mind going back to those, uh, the line drawings that you had. So I think like on this, like on that elevation, we could say, you know, per this drawing with the following change that the does, you know, the, the siding on the, on the front porch is to be vertical rather than horizontal. I think like we could say that, and that would bring it in line with what that rendering was showing. And we could do the same, you know, we could, I think if we were to do that, we could effectively be where the my understanding of the intention of, of the applicant relative to both this plan and the, and that rendering we saw prior.
That's exactly what I'm proposing. So I wish it was not showing clapboard to make this a lot clearer. So more, you know, I don't, you know, I'm just not trying to do a whole new submission in a month. Um, but like, you know, maybe as a follow up and a courtesy, I could take this particular plan and mark it up in the same exact fashion, showing this actual siding with my, you know, comments, and I can submit that to Mike, you know, on my, you know, viewpoint, Mike Champa that is. And then just say, you know, it, it, you know, I know as, as the Board wrote their decision, this is kind of what we're saying, which is the same exact thing. This is an eight inch soffit sticking out, and then we go around with the panels down here.
Okay.
You know, and then, you know, maybe more, then it's almost like there's C exhibit A. In addition to Andrew's marked up drawings, you know, or whatever. If that would, you know, please the Board, of course.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Hanlon, does that, do you think that that's clear enough?
I guess it's all, it's all in how it's done, I suppose, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Are there other questions or comments from the Board?
Hi, Mr. Chair.
Hi.
Good evening.
Hold on. Sir, if I just, just that one clarification, there was discussion of the brick, uh, face on the front. Uh, it seemed like in the, in the elevation, it goes up above that first floor window.
Yeah, but this is since changed.
Uh. So is, so is the top part gonna be covered just for clarity?
Well, um, so this, this has changed. In order to put the window we needed here, we had to take out all this brick. So there's brick still existing below the window. We had to use the window there as like kind of the, like the baseline, and then the new windows, we had to put new headers and stuff up here. So this all got ripped out. So everything down here, so from here up is, is the, is, I believe it's clapboard on this side, then this bump out, which we closed in over here, is the vertical signing we were looking at. But the brick still exists from here down.
Okay. And is it on the, just on the front of the building or on the addition as well?
Um, I, it's just, it starts on this corner here, because this got closed in, then this, to allow for a window with a new header here, we gotta get into this, um, this brick.
So it's on the, the right side of the porch and the front of the house is where that brick would be?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Will Blank?
Uh, one thing I wanted to clarify, um, if the applicant is going to do the items that he had mentioned of sending, um, something to Mr. Champa after this, does that affect, um, because we can't take any testimony after we close a hearing? Is that is that fine because he's technically sending it to Mr. Champa and not to the Board itself?
But in my, in my view, yes, because it would basically be him documenting what the Board has reached as its determination, um, through the hearing. So it's, it's more to, it's not something that the Board is going to approve afterwards. It's something that the, that is gonna be used with a building inspector to clarify what is, what Mr. Burns is intending to do.
Okay, and we'll have the conditions in the decision of what, what our attempt is. Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't want to get in the way. Um, just be clear, is that, is that Mr. Burns can have a conversation with Mr. Champa representing what happened here, and we have a recording of what happened here, but we are not in a position to approve anything that we haven't seen. So we would never be able to just sort of step forward and give kind of with a condition or anything else and give and give, you know, sort of prospective approval to that. Uh, it just is a, it's a conversation with, between Mr. Burns and Mr. Champa, and Mr. Champa would have to make of it whatever he wished.
Right. Mr. Baranowski, did you?
Yeah, I just had a quick question for the applicant. I was curious if you could explain a little bit more. You'd said that you, you chose the right elevation for the window over the left elevation because there would be, it would catch the eye a little bit better. Um, I'm assuming catching the eye on the street. Could you just maybe explain that a little bit more? I think I know, I think I know why you're saying that. Just want to be clear.
What I meant, uh, let me see this. It's, it's just, there's more on this on the right side of the house. There's like more space in between the two buildings. It just, it seems more natural to have the window on this side, especially if you're walking by a Mass Ave and you look down, because we're only two or three houses in. It just seemed instead of coming up this way, it was just kind of, it didn't, it, it looked like it was kind of hidden in this area, whereas this is a wider area on the right, so we just thought, and this is a closet. That's, that's what I'm kind of getting at.
Yeah.
So I have a window here in the front, and then a window, and then we had to choose each side, and we thought that it was better served for the obfuscation purposes if looking down from Mass Ave will get more eye traffic as opposed to coming up Foster. And that was just kind of a, and a field judgment we made by standing outside for a while and saying, where should this window go? How can we make this closet work and, and satisfy what the Board's looking for? Uh, so we chose that side. That, that's, that's really weird. It was just how it felt.
Yeah, that, that's what I thought. I would just add also another possible benefit to the window being on that, the right elevation, not the left. Um, on the left elevation, you already have a window pretty close to where the, I mean, where the, where the porch, enclosed porch is gonna be. Where on the right, I know it's staggered back in terms of, um, it, uh, the red elevation, you know, that makes it look flush. It's not actually, but still, it adding a right, a window on the right elevation does kind of break up the, what would otherwise be a larger kind of just block of wall.
Exactly.
So I, I, I see what you're saying. I just wanted to add that to the, to the mix as well. That's all.
And you know, and honestly, that might have been the subconscious effect of not seeing anything here. Um, and then, you know, that's why we needed the window. So you're, you're probably right, and we just found the, the same solution two different ways.
Thank you.
Uh, just a, a question for the Board. So how, does the what is the Board to think about the, um, having that, uh, horizontal banding at the second floor level, but not at the first floor level? Does, um, I've been sort of going back and forth in my mind as to whether that the, the two floors should be more similar, um, in treatment. I was just curious what other members of the Board felt.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Will Blank?
Um.
I don't know if I can get that banding around the front, just, just, I'm like thinking out loud as a means and methods, like with this brick. like with this brick and this, you know, unless, you know, it might just obstruct the front steps. But I could put it on the bottom. It's not that, but with the brick being exposed on this side and then bringing that band around, you know, I mean, this is exposed.
Yeah.
So it might look strange right here, picking it up right here and then hidden on this side only. Uh, and then, you know, similarly, if you look next door, you know, they don't even have a freeze board or any of their water table or anything around this.
Yeah.
Are you done? I would appreciate not being interrupted.
Mr. LeBlanc, please.
Me?
Um, I was going to say that I would be intrigued to see what it would look like having the, um, the panels at the bottom, uh, seeing the photo of the existing elevation and how prominent those, the brick masonry, um, sort of what would be guardrails and the way that they're, they're there. Um, that now that we're in, this porch is enclosed of, um, sort of at least harking back to that detail a little bit, um, I think would be something to consider. Um, so I might be in favor of uh, having the panels at the bottom as well.
Okay. Other members of the board? Okay. Are there any other, any other questions from the board before we open for public comment? None. Mr. Burns, if I can ask you to go ahead and stop the share.
Um, actually, hold on. Can I show you one thing? Did I, I think you guys should see, um, so I got a, what I consider to be a very sophisticated phishing scam from like someone labeled that's pulling public record. So I just want to show you real briefly, which I think, you know, maybe it just says like, you know, just heads up, they're like in the public record. But they like went in and some, so I got this email talking about I had an invoice due for this particular meeting. It's very official looking email signed from Sarah at the billing department. And then, so I opened the bill and it's this really official looking bill from the letterhead of Town of Arlington, invoice forty nine hundred bucks. It says, you know, reply to the email for wire instructions. So then I replied, but all said and all, all said and done here, it was like an AI driven scam. It's like, look at this email. Look how close that is, you know?
We're not, right now, we're just still seeing your plans.
Well, I'm just saying, sorry. I just felt like everyone should see this if they're on, on the public record here.
But yeah, that you should abs-
Yeah, we know. We reported it to the police and I told the department and, but just a heads up, like if, you know, just maybe the elder applicants looking for something like this would see that and pay that. Um, just a word, word of the wise, but thank you for your time.
No, thank you for bringing that to my attention. I was unaware of that. Um, so with that, I'll be now opening the meeting for public comment. Public questions and comments will be taken as they relate to the matter at hand and should be directed to the board for the purpose of informing its decision. Members of the public will be granted time to ask questions and make comments. Those who wish to address the board should digitally raise their hand using the button on the react tab in the Zoom application. Those calling in by phone, please dial star nine to indicate you'd like to speak. You'll be called upon by the chair, asked to give your name and address for the record. And given time for your questions and comments, all questions are to be addressed through the chair. Please remember to speak clearly. And once all public questions and comments have been addressed or twenty minutes have elapsed or longer as necessary, public comment period will be closed. So with that, um, are there any members of the public who wish to address this application? This being, uh, fifteen Foster Street. Seeing now, so I'll go ahead and close the public comment period for tonight's, uh, for this hearing. So, uh, just for the board, so what the board has before it, this is an application for, um, a special permit under section five, three, nine. Which would be the enclosure of a porch, which requires, uh, finding by the zoning board of appeals, issuance of a special permit to enclose. There are specific, uh, there are no specific findings related to five, three, nine. Um, so they're just the standard findings that the board is required to make under section three, three, three. And, but before we move on to that, um, I think we'd need to sort of clarify whether, um, sort of what we see as being the, the proposal that's before us now, so that we can, um, determine if that's, that, uh, so with the board can, when it's making its evaluation on, um, the criteria that we, we know what it is exactly that we're looking at. So, um, so my understanding of what we see, and I will just quickly take over sharing for a minute here. So here in the front elevation, what we'll be seeing, so we, uh, this is the volume that is the, the existing porch that's being enclosed. Um, we will see, starting from the top, there's, there'll be railings at the top for the balcony. Uh, that is the deck that is here at the second floor level. Um, the trim board below that, then at this level, there will be vertical trim uh, across the, not only the front, but the sides. Uh, there'll be a horizontal band at approximately the elevation of the bottom of the exist, of the proposed window here on the front. Um, that will continue on three sides as well. Between, then below that, this will be, um, panels with, uh, vertical battens, uh, where the panels join. Then we will have this eight inch soffit piece, uh, that will protrude, um, to give a solid horizontal line at the floor level at the base of the second floor. Then below that, there will be vertical siding on the front and on the left side, so this side over here, we have the vertical siding. Um, all the way across and then, um, on the right side here, as opposed to, um, the vertical siding will come down, there will be a, a basically a, a cap rail or some kind of a horizontal band here. And then below that, this will be brick masonry. And then, um, on the front of the building, which is not under our purview, but just for the, just for understanding that brick below the elevation of the window is intended to remain. While, uh, meanwhile, the, above that level, it will be infilled with siding. And the only other change here being that, um, the addition of this double hung window here on the right side of the porch, the, the porch is being closed. Um, and then on the left side, there's no new window openings, um, but it continues the same uh, surface treatment from the front. Just to confirm with Mr. Burns, that's, that meets his intention.
Yes, that, that's exactly how I, I understand it as well.
Okay. Great. Um, so with that, are there any further questions from the board? Uh, we'll go with, um, Mr. Hully first.
Um, I, I thought on the side, um, the brick is still going to be up to the water table or up to the, is that not the understanding there?
It is. So, um, so there will be brick in this region here.
Right. And as I see currently, it goes all the way up to the grade as well.
Um, oh, so it'll carry down, you mean?
Yeah.
The, but thi- this picture is not taking into account the topography of the lot, so that this is actually like dirt up into here. And then there's like a retaining wall that kind of connects with this corner that like defines the driveway over here. But all that being said, th- th- what you'll see is going to be brick from here until you get to the board and batten up here.
Yeah. And up here, it's, it's more vertical siding than board and batten, right?
Well, yeah, I, I think I'm calling a board and batten. You're calling a vertical siding. So, well, we're talking about the same one.
Yeah. Mr. Baransky, I think you had a question as well.
Oh, no, I was, I was just going to ask if, if, if we had a, if the board had a view on, on what to do with, um, um, the money, whether we want panels on the, on the bottom or just keep, or keep it as brick. I wasn't sure if, if, if the board had come to a, come to a consensus on that.
So if we were, we would be looking effectively, I think, like this zone here on the front, having a similar sort of infill pattern to what we're seeing up above. But it would be limited to effectively the front and the left side, because the right side will be masonry, will be brick masonry, excuse me.
Yeah, and I, I, I'm just hesitant to agree to that because I think we're trying to make the top look like a porch, because it originally looked like a porch. And then, you know, I think it'll look good with panels, but sometimes you overdress things, you know, and I worry that it'll get into like what we're trying to appease with the board. It's, it'll reflect. You know, I don't want to, you know, the design to affect marketing. Uh, and you know, I don't know if we're trying to do too much and it looks like we're doing too much and I get something tied to my title on public record. Sam panels here. I, I, you know, I, you know, I wonder if we should just maintain what we originally agreed up here to make. Cause what, what we're trying to do is the porch was originally up here, right? That's what we're trying to bring back.
The porch is effectively was on both levels initially.
But it, but I would, but it's almost like we shifted everything off one, like this open porch existed on the second floor with a door. Exactly.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just to get the conversation going on that. Was there, I thought that the applicant showed us another porch that was right near there, another closed in porch that
I did, I can.
Had a somewhat similar, at least on the first floor, I should say, somewhat similar design. Um, maybe not vertical siding, but, um, didn't have panels. I'd be curious maybe if we could put that up, because if insofar as we're making, we want to make this look like a porch that's also in keeping in the neighborhood. It might be useful to have the comp, the, the comparator up as we talk.
Yeah. Mr. Burns, if you still have access to that image.
I can share if you'll, uh, or come. Um, this one. So I mean, I, I think this is what you're talking about, Mr. Baransky, if I'm not mistaken.
No, I thought there was another one. I thought there was another one that was the, the, it was actually enclosed. You showed us that, um, and yes, this one.
So this is directly across the street?
Yeah.
So, you know, and then I think what we're trying to highlight is so similarly, I think, you know, we're getting, you know, we'll be able to get, you know, the, the look of the two porches just with this top, you know, soffit, you know, because it'll look like it's coming down into it. Uh, I'm not sure if, you know, we'll gain anything by putting anything down here. But mine, yeah, but it's going to look very similar to this, with this whole square all the way around. Um, this has kind of like a a scoop to it right here that I don't know if we'll make that. I kind of like more of a pitched like right into the, right into it.
And that's, and that's just a, I think you already said this, but I just want to make sure. This is right across the street from the board.
This, this house we're looking at right now is directly across the street. I think this is, you know, maybe like eleven or something. And then this one is just around the neighborhoods. But I wanted to show this one, because this has more of the detail that I, you know, intend to do versus like that copper scoop down here that have.
Yeah. The only, the only reason I was interested in this one is because I wanted to see what the, what the first floor looked like on the enclosure, given that that might be a useful, you know, I'm not an architect, so I, I'm, I'm, this is something where I don't have the same, you know, inclination to, I don't, I don't see the same nuances as my architecture peers here, but um, thinking of this in terms of what we're trying to do in terms of the spirit, affecting the purpose of the bylaw and make this read like a porch. I mean, one way to make sure it reads like a porch, to, to my mind at least, would be to make it look like an enclosed porch in the neighborhood. That's just my view. And I'm not speaking for the whole board, of course. It's just, that's one possible way of framing this, and I'm not sure if it's the most useful way, but it's just something that came to mind as we were talking.
Well, I think my, my, the question that the board's going to have to evaluate is, does the, uh, what, what is being proposed by the applicant, does it provide the appearance of an enclosed porch? Um, which is what the bylaw is contemplating rather than, uh, making it just an addition, um, which in the front yard, which is not something that the board is allowed to approve uh, by a special permit. That would be a variance request. So, um, that when we're evaluating the criteria for a special permit, we just need to confirm that we're, um, that we're able to fi- to, to make a finding that it, that it is an enclosed porch.
And then I, I guess I'll ask the board, I mean, do the picture we're looking at now, do we consider this an enclosed porch?
Definitely.
Yeah. So then this is my intention to mimic this look feel like that. This is what I'm intention to do. Like we went on measure and they didn't soft it all the way around this thing.
Yeah. But this also, this also has significantly more fenestration than yours does, like.
But it's significantly larger as well. You know, my, my house is this big.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, you know, I, it would make sense to have more windows.
But the proportion of window to wall is, you know, it's mostly windows. And I think if you were to look at the sides, you'd see that, that the sides are probably windows and not straight infill.
I mean, I don't, you mean, I can pull up Google Maps if you want.
No, it's, that's fine, but it's.
No, I, I understand what you're saying.
You have a porch that has, you know, a specific structure and you're putting windows in where it's open. And that's the, sort of the typical enclosure mode. So, um, but a lot of what we're seeing now are less that and are more sort of just making it a solid mass and moving house program into it rather than it operating as a separate entity. Um, because also enclosed porches typically have a floor level that's different than the house, which is an artifact of there being a porch. Um, and they're not just a straight extension of the, of the house. But this is something that the board is seeing routinely and the board is trying to work to, uh, sort of come up with a distinct set of cri- of criteria that it's looking for in order to be able to, um, to make the evaluation and to feel comfortable that it is what is being approved by the board are can be considered enclosed porches and that are not just additions that are occurring in the front yard.
Right.
Okay.
And then, you know, I, and, and just to, I mean, we're adding a living area, but I'm not adding to this structure at all. This is a pre-existing non-conforming footprint. Um, so I'm not really adding into the setback. I think we're adding more living space. But, you know, in, in effort to, you know, I, I, I agree. I want to make this look like the neighborhood. So this is what we intend to do to make it look like a closed in porch.
Yeah. But you, but by the enclosure, you are creating additional living space that's
Right.
outside the footprint of the house. So that's, that's what the board needs to make sure that it, it is comfortable with what it's, um, with what it's evaluating.
Understood.
Okay. Uh, so why don't we go ahead? I'll ask you to, uh, stop that share. Thank you. Um, so to the criteria so for the special permit, um, the overall finding that the board would need to make um, is that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts. And in order to, to reach that conclusion, the board needs to, uh, make the following findings. Um, there are first is that the requested use is allowed or allowed by a special permit in the district. Uh, so the enclosure of a porch, um, is allowed by a special permit in the, in this district under section five, three, nine D. Um, so that finding it can be made. Uh, the second is, um, that the board needs to find that the requested use is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. So the, the enclosure of the porch, which creates additional, um, internal uh, space for the home, uh, this is something that's done routinely. Um, in, and proposed routinely in Arlington, um, it allows for uh, additional living space, which is something that is, um, Uh, additional living space, which is something that is, um. Desireous of, of residents in Arlington and is something that, um, can be beneficial to the, um, to the owners. And it, uh, the, that additional living space provides a, additional welfare to the. Both the residents, um, and the, the town as a whole through the, um. Through the increase of, of property values, um, in town. Uh, the third is that the requested use, the board needs to find that the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. Um. As the applicant has noted, this is not changing, uh, the outline of the house at all. Um, that this is on the su, this is away from the driveway as well, so it does not affect the existing sightlines. Uh, we'll note that this is very close to the Gibbs School, um. So there are, you know, a lot of children, um, in this neighborhood, but this, uh, this project is not in any way impeding the existing sightlines. Um, and is not con, going to be contributing any additional, uh, vehicular traffic to the street. Uh, the board needs to find that the requested use will not overload any public system. Um, this is just a, a small, uh, expansion of an existing home, uh, will not cause any. Uh, undue increase in any of the, the services or utilities that, that the town or the utilities will be required to provide. Um. The, the, the special regulations, uh, for the requested use are fulfilled. As I noted, there are no special regulations for this use. There are no specific findings related to the enclosure of a porch. Um. That is not an issue, um. The next one, uh, that the board needs to find the requested use will not impair the character or integrity of the district. Um, and this is sort of really the one where we, uh, the, the, the board has been struggling to find a. A specific way of evaluating, um. These types of, of, uh. Of, um, enclosures to make sure that the enclosure is. Is, is really has that appearance as an enclosure rather than as a, as an addition, um. So I'm gonna put a whole, that's gonna set that one aside for a minute and. Do the last two and then we'll come back and discuss that one. Uh, so there. The board needs to find the requested use will not be detrimental to the public health or welfare, um. The enclosure of a, of a porch, the addition of, uh, a living space does. Not in any way, um, cause a detriment to public health or welfare. And the, the last criteria is that the, the board needs to find the requested use will not cause an excess of use detrimental to the neighborhood. Um, this is this two-family house in a two-family district, um, and the proposed. Uh, enclosure of this area at the front of the house does not in any way, um, cause an excess of any kind of, uh. Use that would be found detrimental, um. So then the, the finding that I had said to go back to was the, the requested use will not impair the character or integrity of the district. So, uh, as is being proposed and as we have discussed, um. So the existing porch that's there was, has been reconstructed, um, it is more, much more enclosed than. Um, a standard than a, uh, the porch was before and more enclosed than typical. Uh, a typical enclosed porch would be, uh, the applicant has proposed that at the second floor level, um. Not only is there a window on the front, but there will be a now a window on the right-hand side, uh, they're proposing a. Um, a, a, a soffit detail at the base of the second floor that would. Uh, from, sort of, provide more of the, the two-story breakup that you would typically find in a porch. Um, at the upper portion of that, proposing, uh, changing the, the. This type of siding at the base of the window, so there would be a, a horizontal board that would, uh. Differentiate that below would be more of a panel system, above that would be more of a vertical siding or board and batten type of, uh. Appearance and then. Below that, it would just be the board and batten appearance, um. The left and right side would not have any openings, uh, there would be a door and, excuse me, a window on the, on the front. On the right-hand side below the ele, uh. The lower portion would, um. Have the, the brick from the original, uh, porch that was there before and that. Exposure of brick would continue on the front face of the building as well, um. And so the board, uh, so the board would need to make the finding that, um. That, that appearance, um, is not going to impair the character, um, or integrity of the district. I, in my view, this, um, I mean, it's. Pretty strong to say it would impair the, uh, the character integrity as it's, as it is proposed, um. I think the, that the, the, you know, the board does need to pro. Protect the by, you know, the, not protect the bylaw, but to en, enforce the bylaw that it does have the appearance of an enclosed porch rather than just being an addition to the front of the home. Um, I do think that the, uh, the elements that have been. Uh, proposed by the applicant, um, go a long way in doing that, uh, as Mr., uh. Mr., uh, Hanlon had noted earlier on. You know, the board is really looking for design solutions to this regulatory issue that, uh, we're trying to, to thread the needle on here, um. And so I think that it's up to the individual board members and their votes to deter, determine whether, um. It's comfortable with all those findings. Um, in support of those findings, the board is allowed to impose conditions. Uh, there are three standard conditions that the board would apply. Uh, to any special permit grant, uh, which I will now read into the record. The first. That the plans and specifications approved by the board for the special permit shall be the final plans and specifications submitted to the building inspector of the town of Arlington in connection with this application for zoning relief. Should be no deviation during construction from approved plans and specifications without the express written approval of the Arlington zoning board of appeals. Uh, the second is that the building inspector is hereby notified there to monitor the site, should proceed with appropriate enforcement procedures at any time they determine that violations are present. Building inspector shall proceed under section three point one of the zoning bylaw and under the provisions of chapter forty, section twenty-one D in the Massachusetts general laws. And institute non-criminal complaints. If necessary, the building inspector may also approve and institute appropriate criminal action, also in accordance with section three point one. And the third is that the board shall maintain continuing jurisdiction with respect to the special permit grant. Um, in addition to those, um, standard conditions. Uh, the board would include a condition, um. Would very specifically would address, uh, the changes in the appearance from what are in the, uh, the plan that. The elevations that were provided today, so specifically the directionality of the siding. Um, at the first and second floor level and, uh, where there is, uh. There will be brick exposed on the right-hand side of the addition, um. On the, on the, uh. Then enclosed portion, um, just briefly reviewing my notes from our prior hearing to see if there's anything else we had wanted. Uh, to bring forward. Or concerns. More process-related, um, I think than anything else. Um, but, and some appeal from some additional architectural detailing, which I think, um. The board has seen from the applicant. Uh. So with that, are there any additional conditions that members of the board feel would be appropriate for this application?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
So I have two things. One is. The conditions here are really complicated and. I mean, just in what you've summarized is a little hard for non-architects to follow. Um, and I think that this may be a situation where, um. Where we may need to see. Not something that's wholly different from the intent of what we've talked about already, but you know, as the, as you're writing up the conditions or whoever is. Doing that, I think even what you already said, if it were transcribed, wouldn't necessarily be a condition exactly and. Um, there'll be a little bit more. Working things out and getting it clear between now and having a written opinion. Than is, that is normally a ca, the case, so. I mean, I think that where we have is as far as we can get, I can't make up right now off the top of my head the. Anything new, but I think that the board just kind of expect that we may have to think more about this when we deal with the final decision. Um, while I, while, while I'm at it and have the floor, I did wanna say. That for me, when you go through the list of the special things, with special, um. Findings that we have to make, the first one is harder than I think. It, it really gets to, uh, an aspect of the case that's important, um. In one sense, and this is oversimplifying, uh, what we say about what the, how the public interest is. Is, uh, served by this is has to do with the value of have, of people having more space and that's true. Um, but. In general, the bylaw does not consider it a plus for people to get more space to locate. Living area in a mandatory setback. That ordinarily, there's a balance between the two and when you have to penetrate a setback, we usually say, you know, it's a good thing for you. To have extra space, but not at this price. And the difficulty that we have, the regulatory difficulty is that we have this ambiguous area in the middle when we're talking about. Enclosing porches where there's a constant strain on that, on that balance and sometimes we think it's one way, sometimes we think it's another. But the interest here underneath it is just preserving the system of a setback that we've got. And that's important public interest, um, and that's why it is, I think, that we have had to struggle so much with figuring out a way of not just saying, fine. People want more space, they, they get more space. Um, and I think that we've done all right in this case, and I think that in, in a way, we've, we, we've making, been making this up as we go along, but I'm fair, fairly satisfied. That at least given what we have to work with, we've done fine, so I'm not really opposed in this way. But I do think that we ought to be clearly focused on the fact that. Every time we let somebody put their living room or whatever, a closet in the front setback. There's a public interest that's involved in that and that ordinarily trumps. No, that's a bad word, ordinarily takes precedence over the, uh. Over the interest in having, in, in having more space, and I think that, that. That's what is causing us having, to have all these problems and we have to be sufficiently convinced that something has. Atherness as, uh, as I, I hate to say, although I think that Mr. Burns' expression, the illusion of a porch. Uh, but that is what we're looking at. You're looking at something as, as Mr., uh. LeBlanc has called it, as something that reads like a porch. Something that justifies why it is that, that there's a compatibility between getting more space. And preserving the, the setback, and that's what we've been trying to do and, and I think that we've done it all. Done it here or that the applicant has agreed to do it here, um, but I'd include that in our now, analysis going forward.
Great, thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Other members of the board? Comments?
I just, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Baronowski.
We've said this plenty of times, but I just will reiterate, this is probably a sign as good as any that town meeting needs to look at this more closely and think about the. Factors that we should be using. I think Mr. Hanlon's saying that, but I also just want to second that. This is an area where we could use more guidance from, from town meeting. I think we're doing the best we can, but it would be good to know. What exactly town meeting would like to see in this, given that the. Given that we're kind of going off of the purposes and doing the best we can, but I think probably more guidance would be possible. So I'm just re, just restaying that for the record.
Alright, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Which old blank?
Uh, just one quick thing, um, apologize if I missed when you were reading the condition, but. Was part of the condition to have the, um. The panels at the first floor as well, was that part of it?
Um, that was, it was not part of what I had read, is that? Do you feel that?
It's something that I would, I would feel. More comfortable with. I also do agree with Mr. Burns' previous comment about over-designing it. And I feel like that it's very easy to do that if we add it on the first floor, um. But without sort of seeing it, it's tough, um. But, uh, you know, as someone who. Drives or walks by the current condition almost every day. It reads as an addition right now.
Yeah.
Hundred percent, so, you know, I think the things that are proposed are going to help a lot. Um, and I'm just trying to. Help that even more, um. You know, especially like I was saying before with the, um, sort of brick guardrail before. You know, where you sort of lose that part of what was the existing porch with the current. Proposed design, um. So. So I, if, if, if others feel that, you know. Uh, it's going to be overdesigned, I, I'm not gonna. Um, you know, who poo this, but that's sort of at least where I stand right now.
I mean, if, if we were to include a fifth condition where we state that the, on the. At the first floor level on the front and left side, um. A similar panel. Application as on the second floor is to be utilized. Is that effectively what you're thinking?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, you know, I think two part of it is as, uh. To our previous discussion of the, the house across the street and that it's the, it's. It reads as it was an infill porch because there is that proportionality between. The fenestration infill versus what the wall area is and we're sort, we, we lose a lot of that. With this, um, given what the program is inside, so I'm trying to. Do all the tricks we can to try and. Make that whole read happen as a porch, you know, if there was the opportunity to have more windows. I think that, you know, could alleviate that, but, um. Because we've discussed here at this meeting and the previous meeting, it's tough to add the, the windows on the first floor, given what's going on or any additional windows.
Okay. Agreed, um. Is there any additional testimony the board feels it needs in order to render a decision? Being none, I would. Ask Mr. Hanlon if he would be willing to direct the. Drafting of a decision, um. In favor of the application with the five conditions that we have noted.
Yes, Mr. Chair might be happy to do that.
Wait, so with that, um. I will move that the board close the public hearing. Um, in docket three, eight, seven, two, fifteen Foster Street, uh, unit one.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Uh, so roll call vote of, of members of the board, uh, we have Mr. Hanlon.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. Old Blank?
Yes.
Mr. Baronowski?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, we are closed on, um. The docket three, eight, seven, two, uh, appreciate Mr. Burns being here this evening again, um. And as we've, we've noted earlier, uh, or subsequent at our next hearing, um, the board will bring forward. Uh, um, a decision for a vote.
Oh, so we're not deciding right now?
No, so the practice of the board, uh, we close the hearing, we draft the final decision and then the board votes at the decision at its subsequent meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time, everybody. I know that went probably longer than everyone wanted, but I really appreciate it. Have a wonderful evening and good luck with the rest of the docket.
Thank you so much. Uh, so with that, the next item on our agenda, uh, item number four is docket three, eight, seven, six, nineteen Farrington Road. Um. Which is an application for a special permit, um, also under section five, three, nine, D of the zoning bylaw. So with that, I'll go ahead and ask the applicant to introduce themselves and tell us what they are proposing to do.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, um, and good evening with the, the members of the board. My name is Raul Srodi, um. I'm the general contractor for Mrs., um, Cindy Hang and Frank Harkowski, um. We are having a front porch, two-story front porch, and we are looking also to enclose that porch. Uh, can I share my screen? Yeah, I think, well, here it is.
Okay, yeah, perfect.
All right. This is the existing house. You see the front porch, it goes with the width of the house. Left front, a door goes to the second floor apartment, and the right door goes to the first floor apartment. There is front steps, and it's all open right now with a roof above. So where are we proposing is this. This is the front elevation of the house, the-
We're still seeing that photograph.
I'm sorry, and, and let me just get out of the photograph and then stop sharing this, and then I'll go sharing the other one now. The other screen is right here. Can you see that drawing now?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So this is the front elevation of the house, and with the previous recommendations, and also talking with the consistent school in about how can we make it more as a porch in order, yes, to have a, yes, a box in front of the building. So we propose to have a border button on the bottom. The house, as you see before, it has a red teater shingle, check it on, on the part of the whole house. And we like to continue that in the front, the forefront of the house. We have three sets of matching windows. The ingress and, of, the unit will be, remain the same. And on the top will be a double window instead of a single window, roof remains same pitch. It will be just a little higher, just to match the existing interior ceiling height on the second story. We are not adding any square footage and increasing any of that stuff. We are just to create more of a porch. We are in very thick corner boards at the corners here. You see that, a big, what a water table or skirt at the bottom, and divided these two border body with another piece of trim, and a triple, a, or one, one unit triple window. And that will comply with the fenestration on the, for the bedroom. We can see here on the top, this, the first floor unit, we will have a, a bedroom. You see the two entries here, nothing will change that. And, and the second story will add it another bedroom on the left corner of the house. And then we'll extend the living room, exiting the room to the new porch. This is what we propose for the front of the building. The look for the site or the building, this house will look from the driver's side of this building, this one, you look like that, same carrying it, carrying the, the design around it. And then this is the rear, and then this is the right side, this is the neighbor side that only this, this is the left side. And that will go forward. And you have a actually balusters about the stairs and stairs down. So only the second floor will be enclosed side to side in the front and the first floor, and will be only three quarters will be enclosed, and the other one will remain as an entrance for that two units. This is our case, thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. So the porch that, to the, in the enclosure of the porch, are you changing the, any of the dimensions for the porch as, from what it is today?
No, we're not increasing the footprint, we increase in the second floor height.
Okay. And there's the, it'll have a roof on top, so there's not a proposed deck on top. Have you considered having any windows on the, the sides of the porch?
Well, yes, not right now, because again, it's only, it is for the architect who, who drew this one. And there is one bit, one window, if you look at, this is the first floor.
Yeah.
One window right here, and this triple window on the side. So thus, and then if we put one more window here and decide there's no way how to put a headboard or anything else on the, in the bedroom. On the second floor, the living area also has double window already here. And there is nothing, again, again, there is no four couches or anything like that, or TV if they- Also here on the left side of the house, the closet, and again, this, the same scenario is just for, you have too many walls to put furniture.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. LeBlanc.
I just at least wanted to comment on this one, that I think this matches sort of what our intent is when we're discussing these enclosed porches, that, you know, there's a reading of what existing balusters there are. You know, we have some differentiation there. You know, trying to maximize the, the fenestration that, that's showing. So I think this is starting to approach a lot of the things that we like. And also, you know, there is at least somewhat of a little bit of the porch at the entry that's being retained. I think that also helps. Sometimes in, in these cases, when we're seeing enclosed porches, we don't always, there's not always the retention of at least a little bit of a porch. So I think this one is starting to be pretty successful in terms of the things that we're looking for.
Thank you. Other members of the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Holly.
I, this, the front facade, although, you know, the difference in the dormer slopes are slightly different, but it, it's a pretty symmetric one. I see that the first floor, there is a provision to align the triple window with the top floor and still retain, is that something the applicant is willing to look into?
Yes, so if we align the first floor with the second floor, we can do that, it's not a problem. But it won't be symmetrical on the second floor or in the first floor. So it will be offset for purpose side, for a structure side, it's not a problem. It, it just, it will, it won't look good as it is right now symmetrical.
I, meaning the window is going to align with the window on the, on the top, right, right? So what? You're saying you're, right now it's centered on the bottom portion of it?
Yes, so right now, you can see these three, these two windows here line up, lines up perfectly on the space. And then this one lines up perfectly on this space. So if we ready to move this part here, let me just-
I mean, if we, if we shifted the, the first floor over-
The first floors to the right?
Yeah, and then you say just put it in here, let me see, and just write it just right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I can do that, is, I mean, not a problem in terms of design from interior of fenestration purpose of the A bedroom, there's nothing, it complies, the same thing, it's just, it won't look a symmetrical both sides, that's all. But if the board's okay with that?
Yeah. Going by the, the floor plans, it looks like it would be more centered in the room than the current window is now, wouldn't be quite so tight into the corner.
Yep.
Slide to the right by two feet or so, or, you know, not two feet, but, yeah.
Sixteen inches, it looks like, maybe.
But, but to, to echo what Mr. LeBlanc was saying, it kind of lines up with the design intent. You know, the, not to compare the hearings here, but to the retention of the first floor entry into the porch, reads more a porch there for sure. So, yeah, that, that's just, I think, it just aligns with the, with the approach the board is taking from my perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Holly. Are there other members of the board who wish to address this at this time? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and ask Mr. Sheen if he could go ahead and stop the share. And I'll go ahead and open this meeting for, this hearing for public comment. As we had noted before, public comment is taken as it relates to the matter at hand. This be directed to the board for the purpose of helping it inform its decision. Members of the public who wish to address the application can raise their hand using the button in the react tab at the bottom of the zoom screen. If you're calling in by phone, which nobody is, you'd be able to star nine. So are there members of the public who wish to address this application? Again, this is docket number three eight seven six, which is nineteen Farrington Street. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment. So what the board has before it, as we had noted, this is an application under section five three nine D for a special permit for the enclosure of an existing porch. As the applicant has noted, it's not going to change the footprint of the porch as it is today. It will result in the, an increase in the gross floor area of the home, because the, the current open porch is not considered gross floor area, but the enclosed porch will be gross floor area. In reviewing the application, would note that this is a proposed addition of five hundred and forty-six square feet. For the existing gross floor area is listed as five thousand, excuse me, three thousand five hundred thirty-four square feet, would be increased to four thousand and eighty square feet. The existing lot is non-conforming lot of four thousand two hundred seventy-five square feet. The existing street frontage is non-conforming at fifty feet, where the, under the bylaw, the minimum is sixty. The, it's, existing front yard depth is to the foundation wall of the house is, has twenty point one five feet, so that's conforming. The enclosure, as we had noted, is, is within the front yard setback, which is why it requires a special permit. The existing left side setback is seven point seven feet, where the minimum is ten feet, so that is non-conforming. The proposed right side yard depth, the current is sixteen point five feet, and the minimum is ten feet, so that is conforming. The existing rear yard depth, the requirement is eighteen, and it's definitely greater than eighteen feet, so the rear, that is conforming. The usable open space, and the, as proposed, a quick peek here. Go ahead and show this plan. So this is the existing and the proposed. So as is noted, from the rear lot line to the corner of the building at present is twenty-four point five feet, and the minimum for usable open space is twenty-five feet. So as today, as is today, the house does not have any usable open space. And going forward, will also not have usable open space. But the requirement for usable, but they still applies, so as we have, as we have noted in these hearings, it's basically you're going from zero usable open space to a greater degree of usable open space. So you're, the existing nonconformity is being increased, and the board just needs to make a finding that the increased nature of that nonconformity in regards to the usable open space is not substantially more detrimental than the existing condition. So that would be in addition to the finding that we need to make under section five three nine D. Anybody have a question about, about that? Seeing none. As we had noted prior, in the prior case, which was also under five three nine D, the board is required to make specific findings under section three 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 of the zoning bylaw for special permits. There are no additional findings that need to be made under section five three nine D, nor under the section eight, how was it, eight one, eight one three? Regards to the, the greater degree of nonconformity that the board would need to be addressing. There are standard conditions that are in place that we read into the prior hearing, the three standard conditions. Are there any additional conditions which members of the board feel would be important to add to based on our conversation? All right, none, I'm gonna go ahead and stop the share here. So the findings that the board needs to make, the, the general, the overall finding in regards to five three nine D is that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts. And in reaching that, the board makes the, the following subsidiary findings. The first, the requested use is allowed or allowed by special permit in the district. As we noted, this is allowed under section five three nine D for the enclosure of a porch. The second is the requested use is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. As was presented by Mr. Hamlin, Hamlin, in the, in the prior case, this is, so the, the board is, needs to consider carefully that while it is desirable to the, the applicant, that the, the home have a, a larger footprint and have, be better suited to the needs of proposed owners. At the same time, from the town's perspective, you have the enclosure, the house does encroach upon the street to some degree, but the town does see an increase in the, the usability of the home, the town sees some increase in the, the value of the property and thereby an increase in the, in the tax base that can be, seem to be favorable to the town. And so that's the, the balancing act that the board needs to evaluate. The third is that the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. This will be enclosing the porch near the driveway, which does shut down some degree of the visibility. I would note that the, the height of the, that the existing railings are very open on that lower level of the, of the porch, and that the, the enclosure of the house will somewhat reduce the, the visibility while exiting. The corner of the porch will be twelve point, twelve point seven feet back from the, from the edge of the property, which is on the inside edge of the, the sidewalk. So there is still some distance there. But it will not increase the, the amount of traffic congestion, but the, the, the board needs to determine, needs to feel comfortable in regards to the, the change in the, the sightlines for public safety. There is a, the nearest school to this would be the Bishop School, which is still a fairly considerable distance away. The, or to the requested use will not overload any public system. This will just be a minor increase in the amount of square footage. There will be negligible impact on the existing public systems and services. Fifth is that the request, the, any special regulations of the requested use are fulfilled. As we noted before, five three nine does not have any special regulations, there are none to be fulfilled. Sixth is that the requested use will not impair the character or integrity of the district. As was noted by several members of board, this, the proposal that's before the board goes a long way towards trying to maintain some of the, the rhythm and- maintain some of the the rhythm and the sort of the the way that that a porch would appear on a house, even though it's enclosed. That this does have larger windows than we have seen on some of the previous applications, which is a very positive sign in terms of the enclosure. And also the way that the it's being treated, that it still has the general appearance of the of the sort of the partition going down the front that a a porch or a did would have that that helps to sort of add to the appearance of the and then closed porch. The next is that the requested use will not be detrimental to public health or welfare. This will not have any impact on public health or welfare. And the last is that the required use will not cause an excessive detrimental of use detrimental to the neighborhood. This will remain a two-family home in a two-family district. It will just be a slightly larger dwelling. And then the the last finding the board would need to make is that increase in the gross floor area with no subsequent increase in the amount of usable open space is not creating a situation that's more detrimental to the neighborhood than the situation that exists today would note that this is a a fairly common occurrence in the town of Arlington, that there's not usable open space to offset additions and many, many homes do not have any usable open space according to the definition. Those are the the findings that I see the board would need to make. Are there any questions or comments from the board in relation to those findings?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hamlin.
Just wanted to underscore what you said a moment ago about windows because it, I mean, here it's clear and greatly to the credit of the applicant that they've that they've noticed what we've been doing and they've worked hard to try to bring to try to achieve these objectives, you know, when they first came here rather than having something that we then spend several weeks and several meetings working out. And one of the things that I think does make a big difference is the size of the windows and how much open space you have with windows. That that is a a feature that more than many other possibilities tends to create a sense that that's really, that's a porch and not an extension of the house. And just in case other people are trying to do the same thing that this applicant had, I think that that is a that is a measure of of trying to open things up that that for that you can leverage quite a bit that it's it it achieves a lot. And I give some credit to this applicant for doing that and just encourage others to think in terms of of trying to make the windows do that work for them.
Well, thank you, Mr. Hamlin. Anything else from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bernowski.
Could I just ask a follow-up question with the finding on whether it's desirable for public convenience or welfare?
Yeah.
It sounded like so we have, on the one hand, the encroaching into the front yard setback of the living space. On the other hand, increase the tax base. Is the finding here that just just to be clear, the finding here is that essentially the increase in the tax base is sufficient to outweigh the concern, the other concern. I just want, I'm just, it sounded like there was some there was some weighing there and given that we have to meet. We have to meet the criteria. It sounds like one, you know, we'd have to say the the tax base out, the tax base desirability of the tax ways outweighs the 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 negative of the encroaching on the front yard. I'm just wanting to make sure that we're clear. That's what we're saying.
I think so. I would also ask Mr. Hamlin, I know that he often has a better handle on what could be considered to be desirable for the public convenience.
So I think that the, I mean, if you're balancing the you can't just look at one side. So this, let's just assume that on the side, on one side is the tax base and on the other side is the is whatever adverse effect we have on the on the sort of the integrity of the front yard setback. At that point, you know, the the advantage to the tax base is more or less fixed. But the degree to which there's an intrusion on the front yard setback depends on the kinds of things that we've been talking about. And here you might consider that that if this had been a different case and if instead of trying to accommodate our objectives here, the applicant had come up with something that was more or less indifferent to the effect this had, that that would affect which way that would affect where the where the scales come out. So here I think in this particular, in under this this thing, it's not just a matter of finding whether there is a benefit or even whether the benefit in the abstract to the tax base, which is always there outweighs something else. It's whether in this particular case, on a case-by-case basis, the concerns we have about the about making this stuff looking like a porch are or are not outweighed by the various kinds of of convenience that providing for this this extension would do. And the critical issue in all of these, I think, with respect to analyzing here is just how convinced we are that the applicant has done what is necessary in order to, in order to keep the in order to design the the enclosure so as to retain the portionist, so to speak, of of what is being enclosed. And if they do a really good job of it, then that seems then the convenience sort of outweighs the the problem it poses. And if they don't, it comes out the other way. That's at least the way I looked at it when I was in the comment I made in the in the other case. It's it's very important to preserve the readability of of the porch as a porch in order to be able to say for the first criteria that the convenience and what normally is something that is very positive is still enough to outweigh outweigh the adverse effect that it has on the setback. Because you know, every time you have, I mean, even if these just somebody blatantly just intruded and 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 built out to the front sidewalk, they'd always be able to say, they probably would be able to say it includes the tax base and they'd always be able to say that they really like living space. That is always there, but it but this whole zoning by law is based on the notion that that kind of consideration by itself is not enough to outweigh the disadvantages of allowing that kind of encroachment.
That was my understanding too. I just wanted to be clear that we weren't just saying that the increase of the tax base essentially is a get out of it just, I just wanted to be clear on the record that 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 was, that was a, in this case balanced appropriately, not that it was a always going to be the thumb on the scale. I'm good. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you both. I appreciate that. Does the board feel that there's any additional information it needs in order to render a decision? I will move that the zoning board, oh, I will ask Mr. Hamlin if he would be willing to direct the drafting of a decision in favor of approval.
For a moment, I thought I was going to get out of that. Yes, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. So with that, then I will move that the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington, close the public hearing for docket three, eight, seven, six, nineteen Farrington Road.
So moved. Or seconded.
Thanks, Mr. Hamlin. So roll call vote of the board. We have Mr. Hamlin.
Yes.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Bernowski?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
And the chair votes, yes, we are closed on docket three, eight, seven, six. Thank you so much to the applicant for being with us this evening.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you for the feedback. Appreciate it. Thank you. How about Thanksgiving?
Thank you so much yourself as well. So with that, that brings us to item five on our agenda, docket three, eight, seven, seven, twenty, Nykot Street. As chair, I will note that I I do have a contractual relationship with Mr. McDonald on other projects. And so I am recused on this hearing. I will pass the gavel over to Mr. Hamlin. But I will remain because of the absence of Ms. Rolson, I will remain attached to this call and sort of serve as a host in the background, but I will have no part in the deliberations on this meeting. So with that, I'm going to turn off my camera and turn this over to Mr. Hamlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next case on our agenda is thirty-eight seventy-seven twenty, Nykot Street. And I think that I think that Mr. McDonald here is to, am I correct in saying that your role here is to represent the applicant or are you actually the applicant yourself?
I'm representing the applicant, the Bose family.
Okay, so I turn this over to you to invite you to explain to us what it is to introduce the applicants, if you wish, and to explain what it is you'd like to do.
Yeah. Good evening to the rest of the board. Thanks for having this hearing. This project is pretty straightforward. Address twenty-nine Con Street. We're proposing to add a front farmer's porch to the existing building. We are looking for relief, front setback relief for this porch. It is a single-story porch with a roof over it. Again, pretty straightforward, about five feet by the width of the house, thirty feet. Are you able to share the pictures on your screen or do you need me to?
Well, if if Mr. Klein is capable of handling that, that's that's what he's, that's what he's there in the background for. Great.
So here's the plot plan. You can see in the red line, that is the proposed front farmer's porch, six by thirty. The new front setback of this porch would be nineteen foot, nine inches. Whereas I believe the bylaw calls for twenty-five, so we're asking relief for that. Again, pretty straightforward, front farmer's porch as shown. And then Mr. Klein could potentially show us the renderings of, I think there's another attachment we have on that. That's a little bit better. There was another upload we had with a more detailed the second PDF that we put up there. I can share my screen.
There is one that has, that it's actually quite nifty, the way it's provided, that shows the house without the without the porch and then a second one.
Yeah.
That the one.
Yeah, that's that's a PDF I'm referring to.
Christian, do you know what that is?
But if if Mr. McDonald has it available, I think he should be able to share.
Yeah, hold on, let me see if I can do that.
Yeah.
I can share. Can you see that?
Yes.
Yeah. So here's the existing front elevation on page one. Normal colonial two-story. And then the proposed shows the front farmer's porch that we are looking to do. It's probably only three feet, two and a half feet high. Composite decking railings, traditional lattice. But all maintenance-free material, not stone masonry.
Okay.
If anyone has any questions, feel free to.
So I, I don't have any questions about this part. I know, well, maybe the, could you? The on the left side, if I'm not mistaken, you're a little short of the setback isn't quite enough, right? It's like nine point six feet as opposed to ten feet.
Something like that, yeah.
Question I have, the this is a little bit, the porch itself is a little bit in from the side of the house.
Yeah, it's a little bit, yeah, it's taken in slightly on each side, just to give it a little bit just for aesthetics.
Right. And that has been something that we've actually encouraged before. But as you build something out there, that's going to intrude a little bit into the side setback as well, isn't it?
I'll pull up the plot plan again. It looks like our side setbacks. I believe it's nine, nine, three to that little bump out, so.
Right. And the porch looks a little bit more, but not so much as ten, but that's that's the question I have.
Yeah, I I'd have to triple check. I'm almost certain we were fine on left side setbacks. I can certainly verify that.
Okay, it, I think it doesn't make a fundamental difference because you're you're intruding new, a new into the front setback.
Correct.
And if worse comes to worse, you're just extending a little bit in the second setback because that's already nonconforming. And the and section five, three, nine, D deals with both situations. So it's just a matter of making sure that we understand you know, what it is that that
Yep.
involved. I have a a question that I wanted to address it there about usable open space and landscaped open space in the application. It shows landscaped open space and usable open spaces being exactly the same. If we go back here, when you look at usable open space, there you look, it looks to me as if on the assumption that the porch is still okay, you've got enough in the front between the to count as usable open space between the driveway on the right side and the and the lot line on on the other side.
Correct.
You do not have sufficient, you 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 don't meet the dimensional requirements on the side of the house on either side. And it looks to me like you do on the back. And that the total is way more than you actually need for this. So it's not something that's really critical, but the application says that has that being exactly being essentially equal to the landscaped open space, which isn't subject to the same restrictions necessarily. And I'm wondering whether what I'm wondering to whether the 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 calcula, what the basis is of the calculations in the in the application and whether you're confident that they're right.
I'm confident we're fine with the open space. I'd have to double check the exact calculations on that baseline. I don't have it handy currently. I think honestly, I thought it was just more of the setback restrictions.
Right. Well, we do, I mean, actually, I don't think that you're, I think that it's a matter of of dotting i's and crossing t's because it's easy for me to see that that assuming that I, what I just said is approximately right on the usable open space, that there's way more than you actually need. You're not you're not pushing the edge on that. But it is important because these things go into the public record to have the applicant get it and and have the calculations be right, even if.
Right, I'll there, yeah, I'll verify that we make sure the open space requirements are reasonable and sufficient.
Okay, and a similar one, which is obviously, this is a two and a half story house on the plot plan and it seems clear that it's two and a half stories from your elevations, but it's listed as two stories in the application. So it would be helpful to just sort of, if you could go through that and just make sure that 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 you've got what you want on on there. And I think that we probably should have a condition to you do that. Mr. Champa will sign off on all that. All right, that's what I had. Let's turn to the other members of the board to, I mean, I guess with one editorial comment, after all the closed porches, it's lovely to have an open porch for a change. And let me open up to comments or questions for the members of the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bernowski.
Just one quick question, just so I make sure I'm reading the plot, right? There's already an existing porch or landing or here, right? That's, it looks pretty clear that there is. I just want to make sure I'm.
Yes, yeah, there's, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mr. McDonald, that's, that's why you're applying under nine D rather than nine A, right? Because you're essentially extending an existing landing.
Correct.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Rosenberg.
You have a couple of questions. One is, I, how much further out, including the stairs? That porch is going to come from the existing landing. I assume it's de minimis. If at all. If it's a, you said a five-foot depth on that porch?
Yeah, it's six feet. It's probably only three feet off the ground. So I think there's only three steps down to grade.
Okay, so it's going to be lower than the existing landing presumably? Okay, so it's going to be lower than the existing landing presumably?
Yes.
And then one comment and then another technical question. The comment is, obviously, I agree. I think aesthetically, it's a nice addition. It's more inviting from a street scape. You know, it doesn't have the mass of an enclosed porch. The only question is, have you, have you noted how that falls in line with the other houses on the street? Given their setbacks and whether that brings the, the footprint of the house, you know, the mass of that footprint dramatically towards the street relative to the houses to the left and right of it? And whether it makes the house sort of ponderous, you know, with the other houses still, you know, their their, you know, front face being set back from that at that point.
Yeah, I'm pretty familiar with that street. There's a lot of other similar houses like this. I don't think this is going to be an outlier and standout. I mean, I can certainly provide pictures of other houses in the neighborhood if you'd like. But I, I, I don't believe this will. I, I think this will match the aesthetics of the neighborhood.
And then the last question is, is a, is a technical one. Most of these houses, the, the gas meters on the front side of the house?
Yep.
How do you handle building a porch over the, the meters? Does that create accessibility issues or is that okay with with N-Star or Eversource?
I don't think in this particular case, it's on the front. I think it's on the side. So I don't, I don't believe that came up in, as a, as an issue.
I thought if it is, do you need to then?
The gas needs to be, yeah, the gas meters need to be accessible. Worst case, we would do an access panel. But, you know, it, it still will be accessible and even if it's not, I'd have to coordinate with the gas company to have it relocated.
I would, I would check on that. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else who wishes to address this case? Okay, seeing none, it's now time for opening the meeting to public comment. As this was true in the earlier case, the public questions and comments will be taken as they relate to the matter at hand and should be directed to the board for purposes of its, of informing its decision. Members of the public will be granted time to ask questions and make comments. Those who wish to address the board should digitally raise their hand using the button on the React tab in the Zoom application. And those calling in by phone, please dial star nine to indicate you'd like to speak. You'll be called upon by the chair, asked to give your full name and address for the record and given time for your questions and comments. All questions are to be addressed through the chair. And please remember to speak clearly. Once all public questions and comments have been addressed, the public comment period will be closed. So with that, are there any members of the public who wish to address this application? Yes, I see a person whose last three digits is six forty-four.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, that is me.
I can tell that.
Yes, yes, you recognize over, yeah, Steve Moore, Piedmont Street. I, I joined the meeting quite late, so I apologize. But I want to say on this particular application, I would like to echo your comments. It is wonderful to see an open porch addition to basically a blank front face. And I think, I think it's a, an excellent addition. I believe this is a private way. And I would just like to also applaud the applicant for having planted a tree right up against the street plot line. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moore. Is there any other member of the public who'd like to, like to address this application? All right, seeing none, we'll, we'll close the public comment period and turn to looking at, at the case. The request here is to is to put a farmer's porch on the front of a house. The farmer's porch would extend and reduce the front setback into, I think it's roughly nineteen point six feet as opposed to the required twenty-five. And it would also increase the existing non-conformity on the left side, which now is at nine-three. And while it wouldn't make that nine-three, nine-feet-three inches bigger, it would increase the amount of the house that was, that was in the left-side setback. In both cases, these, it is permitted to do this under section five-three-nine-D. And and so that is what the application is for. Section nine-three-nine-D, as we've noted in other cases, does not have any special regulations of its own. The applicant merely needs to meet the to meet the requirements of section three-point-three-point-three of our of my law. The so turning to that, the the overall criterion for section three-point-three-point-three is that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh the beneficial impacts to the town or neighborhood in view of the characteristics of the site and the proposal and the relationship to the site. And the board, I think, could probably decide that one in favor of the applicant. There's little or no adverse effect of the proposed use. The porch itself is, if anything, a boon to the neighborhood. It contributes to the life of the community, as we've in other cases found porches to do. It's consistent with the character of the neighborhood. It's not unduly large. It's only six feet in depth. And it still leaves about nineteen feet between the porch and the, and the street, which is not all that close. It improves the eye appeal of the house and it increases the tax base, as we discussed in another case. The only potential downside is that it moves the structure closer to the street, but again, it's still nineteen point nine feet away and is not getting all that close. So the, arguably, at least the balance favors allowing the construction of the porch as proposed. In addition to that, we have the specific criteria. One is the use requested is listed as a special permit use in our regulations, and here it is. That's what section five-point-nine, or point three-point-nine-D does. The second is that the requested use is essential or desirable for the public convenience. And I think we've it matches here the aesthetic of other houses, and that is a plus. And the various other things that I kind of read off at the beginning would also be pluses for this application. So there certainly is desirable to the public convenience or welfare on that basis. The second is the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impaired pedestrian safety. Here, there's no particular issue of traffic congestion or traffic generation. The, if you look at the plot plan, you see that coming in from the right, there's no obstruction of the driveway at all. Coming in from the left, there's some. The six feet that, it's a little bit more than six feet from where the garage is, that the cars would come out. Interferes with the sightline a little. There's some delay. If you're far enough away from the driveway, there's some delay before you actually can see the car. But it's fairly de minimis because the porch is not all that deep. And of course, as you get closer to the driveway, the degree of sightline obfuscation is much less. So on the whole, I think it would be possible for the board to find that, that there is no significant pedestrian, pedestrian danger here. Next would be the requested use would not overload any public water drainage or sewer or other public services in the way that would damage the interest of the public. And here it seems pretty clear that that would not be the case with the, with the installation of a farmer's porch. The fifth one is any special regulations for the use? I've been fulfilled, but there aren't any special regulations here. The next is the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts or be a detriment to the health or welfare. And there, there's no plausible effect on the health or welfare other than the public, the benefit, I suppose, of people being able to spend summer evenings on their outside porch rather than cooped up under a conditioned surroundings. The, on, the testimony here has been that the porch is consistent with the overall neighborhood and with other uses in the vicinity. They do not, it doesn't step outside of that. The, just the existence of porches brings people outside and brings people together and that helps to provide the kind of community feeling that has made Arlington as pleasant a place as it is, as it is to live. And so I think that, that for those reasons, it would be possible to find that this is consistent with the integrity of the neighborhood. Finally, this is not introducing any detrimental use. The only use in here actually is that this is R-one and is being used as a single-family. And as we found in other cases, it really isn't possible to decide that an R-one use is a, is a detrimental use in the R-one district that is designed to accommodate exactly that use. So that, that condition we've generally found is not applicable. So I think it's possible for the board to find for the board to find that this meets the requirements of section three-point-three of the bylaw. And I want to open it up to discussion from the rest of the board to see what you all think. Does anyone have any comment or question on, on the, on the application of the criteria? Okay, seeing none, we can turn to conditions. And of course, those are important for those reasons as well. We have the three standard conditions that Mr. Klein read into the record in the, in the previous case. And we presumably would close those. I would propose a fourth condition, which is the applicant is to revise revised and signed dimensional and parking information and open space gross floor area sheets correcting any deficiencies relating to open space that we've discussed at this meeting to the Department of Inspektional Services for review. And that is intended as, as we were having during our earlier discussion with Mr. McDonald is just to make sure that by the, that by the time Mr. Champa asks on this, all of the, all of the papers are fully consistent with one another and accurately state the situation. Are there, does any member of the board have any additional conditions that they believe would be appropriate in the situation? Okay, seeing none. Chairman usually asks me if I'd be willing to if I'd be willing to direct the preparation of an opinion affirming this with. And so in my capacity as temporary chairman, I ask myself that. And as my capacity as vice chairman, I say, yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to. Is there any? Is there anyone who believes we need more information to act on this case? If not, I move that the, the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Second, Mr. LeBlanc, is there any discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call. Let's start, I'm going to just, this is Mr. Rosenberg's first meeting, and so I'm going to start with him. But that's also because you happen to be right next to me in the lineup. Mr. Rosenberg.
Honored, I, yes.
Mr. LeBlanc.
Yes.
Mr. Baranowski.
Yes.
Mr. Holy.
Yes.
And Mr. Klein is not participating, so the, the so the motion passes. As we always do, we'll, we'll be preparing a written decision for our next meeting, which I believe, I believe is December the ninth. And at that point, we'll have, we'll act on a written decision and the applicant can go forward in the usual way to or we, we'll be able to wait, to get it to the clerk and to wait the usual time before you, before you can proceed. But Mr. McDonald has done this many times. He knows exactly what that's supposed to be. All right, is there anything else to, on this case that we should be? If not, I will turn the chair back over to Mr. Klein.
Thank you, Breton.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. I would, but thanks, Mr. Hanlon. I would just ask Mr. Hanlon to clarify whether he voted in favor of closure.
I did. I, actually, I didn't. But that's okay. I will, I, nonprotocled will, will do that, and it passes even without me.
Perfect. All right, well, thank you for that. That is the end of the normal meeting items on our agenda for this evening. I want to know for the board that our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, December ninth. And that the board is not scheduled to have a meeting, that will be the final meeting of this calendar year. We're not scheduled to have a meeting on December twenty-third. And when we start in the new year, Tuesday, January thirteenth would be the, the next upcoming meeting of the board.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
I'd like to just reserve, we should consider, I'm not quite sure where we're going to be in the next meeting. I don't think that we have a, have a particularly heavy load. And we may or may not have any actual opinions that we need to get done because something has been decided on the ninth. But I think it's, it's, it is a difficult thing to ask the applicants to wait, what, over a month for the next meeting after an opinion, after the sense of the board is that the is that if the case should be adopted and, and it just takes that long for us to have the next meeting to write the opinion. And I'd like us to sort of keep in mind the possibility that it may be good to just establish an administrative meeting where we don't have public hearings as we've done sometime in the past and, and approve a couple of decisions. We can probably do that in ten or fifteen minutes and save the residents of the town a fairly long delay before getting an approval for us when we, when there's a particular reason for it, except the calendar.
Okay.
We may not, but it would be nice to have, for us to keep in mind the possibility that we would.
Yeah, so the, if we were to do, so the, the meeting that's upcoming on the ninth, there are two, there are two hearings on the agenda. The first is the continuation of twenty-nine Hemlock Street. And the second is a new request for a second driveway at one-ninety Mystic Valley Parkway. So should we vote, should we close either of those to be looking? Assuming that we can act quickly, we could try to schedule a meeting for that subsequent week, which would be the sixteenth of December. If that is available, otherwise we would need to try to find a different day to do that. But for the moment, if people have the sixteenth available, it'd be good to keep that open if possible. So with that, and there being no further business, I would like to thank you all for your participation in tonight's meeting of the Arlington zoning board of appeals. I appreciate everyone's patience throughout the meeting. I'd especially like to thank Holly Ralston and Mike Champa for their assistance in preparing for and hosting this online meeting. And also take an additional minute to I was going to thank Mr. Rosenberg for volunteering, joining the board. It's good to have, have him with us. Please note that the purpose of the board's recording at the meeting is to ensure the creation of an accurate record of our proceedings. It is our understanding the recording made by ACMI will be available on demand at acmi.tv within the coming days. Arlington Community Media is dedicated to providing an electronic forum for the free exchange of information and ideas which reflects the talent, skills, interests, concerns, and diversity of the Arlington community. Please visit acmi.tv to learn how to support this valuable public resource. If anyone has comments or recommendations, please send them via email to zba@town.earlington MA.us. That email address is also listed on the zoning board of appeals website. And to conclude tonight's meeting, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move to Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. And I have a second.
Second.
Thanks, LeBlanc. So roll call vote of the board to adjourn. Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Holly?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Baranowski?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. The board is adjourned. Thank you all very much for being with us tonight. Hope you all have a lovely Thanksgiving and we will see you on the night of December.